Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fridley Public School Board's meeting for June 18th. I call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome, everyone, again. This evening, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by DeVault, seconded by, oh, I'm gonna say Stark. Seconded by Stark to approve the agenda for June 18th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we move on to our Spotlight on Recognitions, beginning with Employee for the Month for June. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Riddle and School Board members. It is with pleasure that I introduce Phil Wallney as our Employee of the Month for June of 2019. Phil received our June Employee of the Month for all of his hard work and dedication to our middle school students. He works between our Setting 3 EBD classroom and Phoenix classroom, helping students stay on track with their homework, their organization, and being a great role model. Phil develops relationships and students seek him out on a regular basis. He's always there to help anyone in the building in need. You can see him daily outside on the crosswalk before and after school, helping to be sure students safely cross the street and greeting them as they come to school each morning. He is currently in school, working on his special education license, and he will make an excellent teacher in the future. And that was written by Principal Cochran. So congratulations to Phil, our Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have a report on the 2019 graduation.
Thank you.
I believe we had one of those, did we not?
Yes. Yes, we did. It was a great graduation as well. So I would like to provide the board and our community with a few facts about our outstanding graduation class of 2019. So for our class of 2019, we had 234 graduates that also included our ALC students. Fifteen of those students were full diploma program candidates, which means that they completed six college-level courses and examinations over two years. Four students also completed our IB career program. We had four students who actually graduated this year with associate's degree. We had 18 students receive Presidential Education Award students. And we had 26 students who graduated with honors, and honors represents those with GPAs of 3.25 to 3.49. We had 36 students who graduated with high honors, and those students' GPA ranged from 3.5 to 3.74. And we had 22 students who graduated with the highest honor, with a GPA of 3.75 and above, and also completed a minimum of three IB diploma courses with external exams. So we had an outstanding class of 2019, and it was a beautiful graduation that evening as well.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to student and staff, or superintendent and staff reports, beginning with bus safety poster winners. Ms. McKay.
Good evening. My name is Cindy McKay, and I'm the Transportation Coordinator for the Fridley Public Schools. And I brought, here tonight, we have seven of our winners from the poster contest. You'll see on the screen others that were joining in. We're required by law to do bus safety training twice a year, and our second training, we do bus safety. And some of you have been on the board, and I've been here before, and this is one of the highlights I really like to do and have fun with it. So the theme this year was "Red Lights Mean Stop." So we have seven winners with us. We also get our contractors involved, and they, the kids, um, he was a star last time he was here. Anyway, so our contractors, First Student and Voits both donate funds, and then we get North Bus Sales, North Central Bus Sales donates a bus bank. And you can't give a bank without money, so the contractors give us the ching to go in. They've all received their banks, and looks like we might have some more. But so they, I've already presented them with their banks and their awards, but they're here to show you some of their artwork. So I'm gonna call them up by name. Brandon Youngren from Hayes.
Brayden.
Brayden, Brayden Youngren. Can you show your poster really nice? He's got a giraffe on his poster. Guess what school he's from?
Of course.
Okay. Liberty Delaney, another kindergartner from Hayes. They all did an awesome job.
Excellent.
Okay, then we have Alex, Alexander Flores from Hayes. Another giraffe, I think, is on there. Okay, and then we have a first grader, Brayden McKay. Okay, and he's from Hayes. And then we have a second grader, Abigail Thomas. Can you want to come over here so we get you on the camera? I know the camera doesn't go too wide. I want to make sure you get on camera, okay? Okay. So then we have, and then from Stevenson, we have a return person that has come. Abinar, I'm gonna mess it up. Abinar, right? Can you come on up? Can you tell me your name again? I always mess yours up.
Abinov.
Abinov, see? There we go. And he's a returnee, and he's been here a couple of years. He's gone to state, he went to state last year. He does a very nice job. And he's got a role model, which would be his brother Akshu, and you might remember Akshu. Come on up, Akshu. And when Akshu started in 2016, he was just as tall as me. And Akshu, can you come around over here? I want you on TV right next to me, maybe. But as you can see, he's really grown. He's a ninth grader now. And, um, why don't you turn around? He's a very good artist and does a very nice job. Just a wonderful young man. I really appreciate his work. And he went to Nationals in 2016 and won second place in Nationals. This year, all these kids' posters went to the state competition, but Akshu's poster went to state and won second place in state. So he, another great year for him. Did I have another one that come in? I'm sorry, hang on a second. And what was your name? Oh, your, you know what? Guess what? He doesn't know what he gets, because he was at that school when I went. Wait, Kara? Can I present you? I want you to, here, can I, stand right here. Is this your poster?
Mm-hmm.
Is it? You did that all by yourself? Good job, you hang on to that. And so then, this is what all the kids got. They all got a Certificate of Achievement, so that's yours. Says that you got second, third place in second grade in all the districts. You beat all the kids at Stevenson and Hayes, and you got second place. Okay? Third place.
Which one am I in?
Yeah, just hang on. And then MSPOA, MAPT always wants to recognize their artworks, so they always get a Good Idea Award, so they get that too. But the best and the most important piece is you get a bus bank, okay? But do we ever give a bank without money? Not in my world. So there's money in there for you. Congratulations. And thanks for coming tonight. I missed you at school. So anyway, that's our 2019 winners, and we will do it again next year. And our theme next year's on the deal, it's about danger zone. But they're all on there. They did a really nice job, anyway. Anyway, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. Excellent.
Okay, you guys, everybody turn around, I guess.
Show them, yeah, that's right.
Show them your picture. You don't want to tell it to me, so you'll be just like Akshu soon. All right? Thank you. Okay. Thanks again, kids.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you again, Cindy. It's always a wonderful, what your kids can do. Next, I'd invite up Giles McLemore to give us a community forum presentation with regards to the recent listening session we had.
Thank you, Board Chair Riddle, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Heil. I always seem to have this unfortunate situation where I follow all these wonderful presentations with students and, you know, showcasing their great work, and I actually have an interesting thought. Many years ago, when we first started, Communications Department usually covers events like this, and we communicate that in our publication. And I remember seeing the posters from Akshay, and yes, he was about Cindy's height by then. And it's really good to see how he has grown. He has gone through the middle school, and he continues to do this work. And now his little brother is also following in his footsteps. So it is always such a joy to see our children transition, our students transition through this different school level. So I have the mouse, I think. Is it on? There we go. So this evening, I have the privilege of sharing a little bit about a community forum that we held on May 9th. So many of you of our community members are aware that we have a new superintendent, and one of her goals was being able to communicate and connect with all different stakeholders for our school community. So through conversations with staff, conversations with parents, conversations with students and community members, it really became important for her to be able to connect with the larger community. And how are we able to do that? By inviting them to our community forum and helping facilitate that conversation to be able to get feedback, because Fridley Public Schools is on a mission to be the world's best place for learning for students and the world's best place for work for our staff members. So on May 9th, we held a community forum here in this building. We sent out invitations, a postcard invitation went out to all our community members. We have access to contact with our families because they're in our databases, but just wanted to be sure that our community was involved. We placed an announcement in our local newspaper so that our community will be able to see that. We are also very mindful that about 80% of our community do not have children in our school district and may not have that daily contact and hear daily news from our schools as they happen. So being mindful of how we communicate and invite them was also very important. And we received more than 100 reservations of community members and parents who are interested in attending this event. So again, the purpose of this community forum was to provide an opportunity for community members, our families, our parents, to provide feedback in a meaningful way that ensured that it was a transparent process, maximize the collection of responses within a short period of time. So typically, when you have a large group of people coming together to have a discussion around any given topic, you want to make sure that all voices are heard. And if you have limited time, sometimes it makes sense to just have small group discussions, and those discussions are then recorded and shared out with everybody else, so everybody gets to hear everybody else's voice. So the students, we had students, because our school, we are an institution of learning, and students are at the center of the education at Fridley Public Schools. We were able to invite our high school students who were there with us that night. They helped facilitate the discussion. Our staff members were there to support them, not to control the conversation, but to help guide them through that process. And I think it was also important for our students to be able to be part of that conversation, because this discussion is about making Fridley Public Schools the best place for them to learn and maximize achievement for each and every one of them. So the conversation that night was focused on three areas. Our school board has a priority of increasing student achievement for each school, each student, so that was our student readiness for college and career. The second discussion point was providing a safe and welcoming environment for each one of our students, which is our school board priority number three, and ensuring a connection between family, families, guidance, and the school district was another point of discussion, which is our priority number five. And just guiding the conversation about how do we improve our relationships with our families and our community to continue to support high levels of achievement for our students. All of that, the whole goal of this community forum and the many conversations that our superintendent has had throughout the year, was just getting feedback from all stakeholders of our school district on how do we make Fridley Public Schools the best place to learn for students and the best place to work for our staff. So again, this slide is just explaining the rationale behind having a Wild Cafe model. Again, having more than 100 people participate, it was really important to have those small group discussions, so every voice could be heard in a smaller and more intimate setting. And then those conversations were recorded, and the students did a fantastic job in helping communicate that. And I do want to say that, as we looked around the room that day, we saw many various members of our community, including representative from the city of Fridley. Our police chief, Brian Warwick, was there, and I do believe their human resource director had also made reservations to attend, as well as a couple of police officers who do volunteer work in our district. So we continue to appreciate that partnership, because it does take a village to educate students and their commitment and willingness to be part of this conversation. The next slides are just photographs that we took on that day, just showing who was there, how the conversations were structured in small group discussions, and the students who were there doing their reporting and facilitating that conversation and helping everyone hear everybody else's voice. And actually, this is a slide with our high school students, who are, I think that was a middle school table, just reporting out. You see the big sheets of sticky notes behind them where they had recorded everybody's conversation and feedback that they then shared with the entire room. This entire forum was facilitated by a fantastic lady called Wendy Tilang, who happens to be the wife of our current Director of Business and Finance, Todd Tilang. Did a fantastic job in organizing this free of cost to the school district, brought her entire family in there to help record and facilitate the discussion, and just made sure that our students who were there felt comfortable and welcome, and people understood the purpose and the function of that forum. And at the end of that, took all those sticky notes and put them all together and collected the primary themes that came out of the discussion. So the families, the community members, the parents who were there, really felt very strongly about addressing challenges and opportunities at Fridley Public Schools. And they looked at, they had conversations about behavior, making sure that we focused on career for students who may not be traditionally attending four-year college, and how do we expand those opportunities for them? Looking at college focus as well, because that is the ultimate goal for all our students, how we improve communication from home to school, and looking at curriculum and giving parents a better understanding of expectations, exposure, inclusion, infrastructure, parent education, resources, and staff development. There are a couple of themes there that have a asterisk next to it, and those are explained. Career focus was assigned to responses that were focused on non-college careers. Parent education was assigned as the primary theme when the answers seemed to be a result of misunderstanding or the need for knowledge in one area. So we know that we have need to improve our communication to families, make sure that the resources that are available, initiatives that we are putting together well communicated to families, so they have a better understanding when they do see those things come across. And exposure was assigned to responses that focused on guiding students through their education and post-graduation goals, which was a common theme for our families of children in elementary schools and high school. So parent education had the most responses. So you can imagine, we had 100, we had 100, more than 100 people show up, and when it came to the question of areas of growth for the school district where they see opportunities for us to continue to move forward, we had about 244 responses. So if you were to divide that by 100, each person probably responded 2.5 times, because they had something to say. We wanted to hear their voices, and that was valuable to us. They had an opportunity to have lengthy discussions in their small groups in regards to that. So the parent education sometimes, not necessarily misinformation that parents have, but a way of the district to look at how we communicate to different stakeholders in the community and to ensure that as we are rolling out new ideas, as we have new initiatives or things are happening in the, in the school district, we are doing a thorough job of making sure that there are no gaps and that all our stakeholders have the information, and if necessary, if we have to do it a few times to ensure that all their questions are answered, and we are providing opportunities for them to connect with us, should they have additional concerns that we can help address and help parents have a better understanding. Communication, while in another slide was really good in terms of some of the new things that we've implemented, I heard Peach Jar mentioned a few times, and this is our digital online flyer system. There were also, you know, areas of growth in terms of classroom-to-home communications, school-to-home communication. Our schools have each a newsletter. The secondary schools produce one every single month. There were comments from parents that, you know, maybe a month may be too long to wait for a newsletter. Can we do it maybe weekly or send bi-weekly information to parents? And then just maybe educating parents more on how they can utilize digital media, because most of them are electronic now, so that if you accidentally opted out of receiving some of that information, you have a way of getting that information and not realizing that you may have missed it simply because you accidentally deleted something and you have been kept out of the loop for a while. And as far as the district communication is concerned, most of our publications are branded, so they tend to look the same. So sometimes, if you're not paying too much attention, some parents voice the concern that, I thought I saw it here, but it wasn't this, but because it looks the same, it is not differentiated for parents. They may have struggled to keep on top of the communication that was coming out either from the district or the school itself. They talked about resources was another one of the emerging primary themes for teachers, for students, and for parents. How do we make sure that the needs of all our different stakeholders for staff, students, and parents are met? And also behavior in schools. So the conversation about managing and increasing positive behavior was very vocal in our secondary schools, because parents have questions about that. And as our children are transitioning from one building level to the other, how do we create consistencies in terms of the support that students get, especially in social-emotional learning? Because that's also a board priority of ensuring that we have a safe school culture and climate for all our students. Students can thrive in an environment that is not conducive to their learning. So these were good things for us to hear, feedback for us to hear, and people to be able to understand that the board has made this a priority, and that is going to be part of our operational plans in addressing those concerns. Okay, so the top four strengths, again, in the previous slide, when we talked about areas of growth and opportunity, we had 244 responses. When it came to the strengths, we had 40. I always want to believe that when things are working well, people typically don't tend to share that as much, but people want to spend the time and energy that they have to talk about areas where they think that if they are not addressed properly, then we may have some concerns later on. So again, communication, but this was more a broader sense of communication. Parents did appreciate, especially in the middle school, the increase in communication in the last year, because they have implemented their monthly newsletter and as well as the Peach Jar digital flyers that parents are receiving in their inboxes. They talked about faculty and staff. There's a great deep and deep appreciation of the relationships built with our staff, because there is a lot of value in that in connecting with students. And students do report back that at least they have a caring adult and that their staff cares about them. Resources, again, comes across for the entire community, whether they are students, they are staff members, and how do we utilize the community more and bring them in more to help support a more positive school climate for our students. And just in general, keeping schools safe, there was discussion about the restructuring that has happened in the last three years. In 2015, we passed a referendum that allowed the district to really address some safety concerns, and they were even within this building, being able to block off the areas where our babies are, so that you will need access to be able to get into those areas. And the restructuring of some of those main office receptions to enhance safety for students. There was conversation that that was really appreciated. And while it's tedious, because now you have to go to one point instead of different points, they thought that, you know, with, in today's climate, you don't take those things for granted, and that those dollars were used wisely. And I think those ones were just graphs representing that information in terms of the number of incidents that those were reported. And I think there are two slides that do that for both opportunities for growth and strengths of the district. So the recommendations that Mrs. Tilang was able to pull from the feedback that every person who was there was able to articulate and was captured in those sticky notes, was that the district needs to develop strategies of educating parents or informing parents in these areas. And again, if you remember, one of the, the most important thing was parent education, misunderstanding about things. So the grading system, you know, the grading system, why was it implemented? How is that useful for students? We are an IB world school district. What does that mean, and how does that also benefit students, along with the diploma program at the high school? Open enrollment, there were questions about that, and some people did not understand why we have open enrollment, what it was, and what was the benefit for the school district. And usually, the board would look at enrollment reports at their meetings. And while we have students coming into our school district through open enrollment, we are also losing students out into other school districts through enrollment. So whether it's a funding issue that people have a question about, our community loses money when our resident students go elsewhere. The district recuperates some of those funds through open enrollment when we exchange those students. We are a member of Northwest Suburban Integration School District, and we have students moving around those three, seven to eight school districts. That's part of the agreement that we have with that consortium. Fifth grade strategy in the middle school that was implemented last year, they just want a better understanding of why that was and how that is benefiting students. Class sizes, how is that calculated, and how do we, how do we compare to the metro averages? Particularly policies on behavior, suspension, dress code, cell phones in schools, and late work, and how those policies are implemented for those particular areas that they articulated. Homework expectations, why do we have homework? Why do we not have homework? What is the benefit for students? And how do we create consistency across the board in terms of expectations? Roles and responsibility of district staff, I think one of the ones that jumped out a lot was the role of deans. Why do we need them, and what is it that we do? So all of these different things can be easily explained to parents. We just have to be mindful of that, now that it's been brought to our attention, to be able to create a form of communication that parents can continue to get feedback and information on areas that they may, they may feel that there is a little bit of ambiguity and just need a little bit more understanding in. And then communication strategies for parents, from teachers, again, just, you know, constant feedback into how students are doing. Sometimes it's also helpful for teachers to connect early, just to create that rapport with parents, so that, you know, when you get that phone call or that email, it's not always a negative thing, but always, you know, sometimes sharing positive things with students about student work and their day. Parent-teacher conferences, that can be more personalized, so parents can spend more time talking to teachers about concerns about the academic or progress of their children. School newsletters, again, suggested weekly, instead of the monthly school-wide newsletters that our principals produce and send to families every month. More frequent portal updates and sometimes just consistency, because there are some teachers who may be doing it well, and then there are teachers who do it at a later date, and so the parents are not getting consistency across subject levels. Creating more opportunities for parents and guidance to give feedback. Again, the forum, most of the feedback we got was that this was a very great start, and they want to see more of that. So the school, the district will be looking at how do we create that opportunity and maybe in building levels, so they can have more concentrated conversations, more relevant to their buildings, and putting forth effort like Board Member Abdi Salam said of making sure that we are very intentional in how we invite diverse families to be part of that conversations as well. Incident communication, this may also be an area of parent education in terms of how do we address situations when they happen. Sometimes, parents may want to know right away, but then there is an investigative process there, so we are mindful not to send wrong information to families. And how do we do that and still protect the data privacy of students? Less reliance on students communicating information to parents in the younger grades. And again, and the last one is just looking at strategic ways to address student discipline and behavior. Again, this is one of our school board priorities. There were conversations around student behavior, concerns about substance abuse, cell phones, social media, and parent training on the information process and application of student discipline policies. And our next steps moving forward will just to ensure that as the district continue to work on its continuous improvement plan, that that feedback is incorporated into our goals and being able to communicate progress to families and community. I think, you know, when we invited parents in and community members to give us feedback, we implied a sense of accountability, that we are going to do something with this information. we implied a sense of accountability that we are going to do something with this information. And that's a commitment that as we continue to work towards those goals, we are looking forward to sharing with our community. And again, we thank them for taking the time, being there with us and sharing our feedback, their feedback with us. And we look forward to more opportunities like that in the future. Questions?
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
There's two pieces that are really important to me is the fact that so many people showed up to share their voice and for some people that was a risk. And so to see that kind of participation the first time indicates a desire to continue having forums like this. And that the district had such thorough recommendations that there's nothing worse than when people ask for feedback and don't do anything with it. So I was very happy to see that part be thorough because it doesn't matter if they show up if we don't incorporate it. So those two things together are very exciting for our district, I think.
Thank you. And, and you know, Dr. Heil will also can add to this. She has received numerous feedback from community members in regards to just their sense of appreciation that that opportunity was even there to begin with. And sometimes it's, it's easy to go into smaller groups and into schools and have those conversations because they are relevant to that community at that time and it's important for them to feel heard. But at the same time, how do you provide the larger community, you know, the opportunity to also hear some of the challenges that the school district is experiencing and ways with which we can continue to work together to, to help accomplish some of those goals. And it has really been heartwarming to hear people say, here is where we are. We are willing to support you whatever way you need so we can get our schools to where we want them to be. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also love to add that the strengths of our district lies in the connection that we have with our families and our communities. So it does make sense that the more we strengthen these relationships, the more we'll have a community trust and that also will add up to more enrollment as we talk about enrollment. It's all about students and families and the confidence that they have in our district. So I think this is a commendable step and we should strengthen it more and do more, maybe at the school level, as you said, probably. So it's more directly related to specific school issues are addressed there. And I really appreciate the forum. It was really powerful.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was gonna go, but I was, I'm gonna add one more thing. I'm not sure if you, if any one of you saw the last, last week's issue of the Sun Focus. There is an op-ed by an education reporter by the name of Joe Nathan. And when I read it, I was like, I wish he had called us because we are doing the same work. So he profiled about five school district or charter schools that are also doing this level of work, had gone through their community forums and were looking at feedback. And one of them just happened to be in Noka Hennepin Schools. So our neighbor up north went through this process in the winter and they're in the process of just looking at what that data means and putting strategies in place. So we know that we are part of Northwest Suburban School District together. This is not anything new. A lot of school district typically when they want feedback from the community, this is the approach that they use. But again, the most important thing is just validating those voices and being able to take that feedback and put them into action strategies. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment that ours is special, Ms. Nathan Moore. And just to put it out there on the record that we will follow through on what the recommendations are and we will communicate back to our community because it's very important. If you took the time to come and present your voice and in my heart, everybody's voice is valuable. So we will follow through. It may not be able to happen by next month, but we will follow through and communicate back to our community. So, thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be done before Noka Hennepin anyway.
I agree.
The gauntlet has been thrown. And I'll see them tomorrow night and I will tell them that.
I'll tell them you said that.
Well, that's not a problem. All right, our next up item is a budget presentation for the 2019, 2020 years. Mr. Stilang? Oh, you're tag teaming it. Okay.
Good evening, Chair Riddle, school board members and Superintendent Dr. Heil. As a school district, we're required to present an adopted budget to the board for approval prior to us expending funds for the next school year. So that's what we're here to do tonight. Well, I do want to highlight, this is an adopted budget. So as we work through our audit this coming summer and as we solidify our student numbers in the fall, we'll be doing a revised budget later in the year. So when we built out the budget, we had some overall budget assumptions. So on the revenue side, we used 2%. And that's based on the legislative that was approved this recently. On the levy and the categorical state aids, we based those on the most recent calculations and those are student driven. And then we kept all other revenues, we kept those flat. On the expenditure side, we kept our average increases at 2.6% on salaries and benefits. We kept those as estimates because as we're getting ready to go in through contract negotiations in the fall, so we used some basic estimates for that. On the non-salary, we mainly kept those flat and we only increased those in the market-based, i.e. fuel and transportation costs. And then we had no changes in our class size ranges. And then from an enrollment standpoint, we're anticipating enrollment to continue to decline over the next two or three years. But if we're able to, you know, capitalize on some of these community forum initiatives and we can get our enrollment to switch back in the other direction, that'll just help from a budget standpoint. So from an enrollment, so we, as you can see here in the 2016, 2017, we were in incline and then starting in the 2017 and then all the way estimated out to the 2019, 2020, we're in a declining enrollment. The 2018 and 2019, and 2019 and 2020 are estimates. And as we work through our audits and solidifying our student enrollment numbers, we'll solidify those numbers as well.
So when we jump into our general fund, this is a summary of the proposed budget to be adopted. Just to quickly walk through what's laid out on the screen, down the left side is the fund balance categories within the general fund. You have your unassigned, which is the least restricted fund balance we have. Your non-spendable are things in a form that you can't take to a store and spend. Inventory, things on hand, you can't go to the store and spend them, so they're considered non-spendable. Assigned fund balances are pieces that are set aside for a specific purpose but not restricted by statute. And then our restricted fund balances are those categories that per statute have to be restricted and can only be used for a specific purpose. The first column of numbers is the projected fund balance that'll be at the start of the 1920 fiscal year. So based on where our current revised budget is, this is where we anticipate starting next year. The next couple of columns is our revenue and expenditure budgets that are being proposed for the FY '20 school year. So as you can see, we have $44,446,274 of revenue and $44,539,397 of expense. So it's a net change of a spend down of $73,000 of our fund balance. The very last column is showing where we project our ending, ending fund balance to be. With our unassigned fund balance, it'll be projected to end at just over 2.5 million, but that's less than four weeks of annual operating expenses. So it's really not a ton of money in the bank. Our board policy is to have a 7% minimum and this is currently projected to be at 7.05%. So we're not flush with cash, we're okay. Our budget, that is before you, is fairly balanced. It took a little bit of work to get here and we'll kind of go through a little bit more on the next couple of slides. So within our revenues, when you look at where does our, our funding come from in the general fund, the biggest slice of the pie is our general state aid. 60% of our budget is from the state unrestricted for general education for students. So whenever the state gives us a two and two increase, the 2% increase is only on that part of our revenue. The rest of our revenue is driven by other formulas, by enrollment or by voter-approved levies. So the categorical state aids are things like achievement and integration, special education, Q comp. Our taxes are either voter-approved or per statute, we can levy on a per pupil basis, safe schools, long-term facility maintenance and operating capital have an aid levy split to them, things like that. Our federal funds typically aren't growing these days, so it's, and that's only 3% of our funding. And then our other local revenues is those fees for services, donations, miscellaneous revenues, interest earnings that the district receives. So like I said, the bulk of our revenue is dictated by the state or by enrollment. When we look at how we spend our dollars by type, by the type of expenditures we're making, 73% of our spending goes on people, salaries and benefits. The next largest piece of the pie is purchase services, which is going to be your transportation, your utilities, your repairs and maintenance, auditors, attorneys, kind of those fees for service type arrangements. So this is part of where our dilemma comes in because our, our people is, you know, the heart of who we are and what we do. So whenever we're faced with budget challenges, I mean, this is a tough conversation year over year. And then the other thing inherent with purchase services and staffing is all of our contracts and all of our agreements have some form of roll-up costs associated with them. So whenever our revenues are dictated by the state and out of our control and our contracts, it's kind of a give and take and a play we have to work with year over year. Beyond those, our capital dollars that we're spending is only 3% of our budget. Supplies is 3% and then other miscellaneous expenses is also 3%.
So we break it down a little bit further. We have expenditures by program and these categories are driven by MDA and our UFRs. I'd just like to highlight the regular instruction, the vocational instruction, the special education and the instructional support. Those account for 78% of our expenses across the district budget, which makes sense since we are supporting our students, supporting our teachers. The pupil support, I mean, the site buildings, the other, the administration and the district support is what I'd like to classify as wraparound and that's the other 22% of our budget. And this kind of is a nice little pictorial or visual on how a dollar is chopped up as it relates to supporting the district. So again, we have 78 cents of a dollar is directly supporting our students. We have five cents as district support services, that's i.e. our HR department, technology, communication, business offices. That 5% down on the bottom for the administration, those are salaries for our superintendent, teaching and learning position, principals supporting our schools as well as the school board stipends. And then the last, our 12 cents is our sites, buildings and others, more or less keeping our buildings operational. It's kind of like divvying up a dollar and how that looks like.
So when we move into the rest of the funds of the district, the district has more than just the general fund. Each fund operates almost like its own checkbook with its own purpose. The general fund is kind of the collect all for everything that doesn't fit in one of the other buckets. So you can see the general fund totals are across the top. The food service fund is our child nutrition program, the breakfast and lunch for all of our students. It does have a balanced budget before you, which is, and it does not include any increases in the meal prices, so it's, it's nice to be able to maintain a budget that's balanced. It has a healthy fund balance. We're sitting in a good place there. Community education is our early childhood, learning readiness, adult basic ed, those type of programming. That budget is also coming in fairly balanced with a decent fund balance. This was one of the budgets that was probably the hardest for us to get together at the end because we were waiting on the legislature to the very last minute to say, how's VPK gonna do? Because that's a lot of slots that can, you know, swing a budget quite a bit. So Stephen was doing a lot of work on all the different options that might come into play depending on how things played out. So he invested a lot of time into this and we appreciate that. So moving down, then we have the capital projects fund. So this is the annual voter-approved capital projects levy that we have. 65% of that goes towards the deferred maintenance of our buildings and grounds. So it's that 509,000 of revenue expense is that annual levy ongoing to maintain our buildings in that capacity. The bonds that were issued in 2015 are fully exhausted and fully spent, so they're no longer part of the capital projects fund. The debt service fund is accounting for all the debt service payments that the district has to make and the related tax levy dollars to make those payments. So the district is required to levy 105% of what those debt payments are, just in case there's delinquencies or things where the revenue isn't flowing in from our taxpayers, we still have sufficient funds to make those debt payments. In the event those fund balances get too high, the state does have a mechanism in the levy process where it will actually reduce a future levy if that fund balance is, is getting up there. So you can see on the OPEB debt service line, we're actually showing a slight deficit and that is because of an accumulated fund balance that's now being used to pay the debt as opposed to levying more on our taxpayers. The internal service fund accounts for our medical and dental self-insured medical plans. Both of those are running very well and are allowing us to better manage our premium costs as opposed to relying on the market. So those are flowing through our internal service fund. And then our trust and agency fund is our other post-employment benefit trust. Bonds were issued to fund this trust to cover health benefits for contracts that handle language where after retirement there was an ongoing health benefit. So these dollars are set aside and to cover those costs, they're not an ongoing general fund expense. So within all of these budgets, there are assumptions that we have to go with based on what we know at the time, whether it's enrollment, still some of the trickle-down effects of the legislative session, where we're actually going to end with our audit results, what students are actually going to show up this fall. Staffing in and of itself, I mean, we, here's who we have now, but staff is always turning over, so we'll also be able to true up our staffing costs in the fall once everybody's in their positions and we know where we're going to be. So that's part of where the budget revision comes in. This is where we're at today in the fall. It may be a revision, maybe everything's spot on and we don't need one. So we'll, that's what we'll evaluate in the, in the winter months to make sure that we're being as responsible as we can with taxpayer dollars.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. I think that makes good sense. I think, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a very complicated issue and I appreciate that. And we know we'll be coming back and revisiting it in, I'm sure, September, October, November when we're doing those revised, so. With that, we'll move to a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget as presented. A motion by Stark, seconded by Adam, to approve the 2019, 2020 budget. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up is a resolution for the long-term facilities maintenance.
Yes. So as a district, we're required by Minnesota statute every year to present a long-term facility maintenance plan. We have to do this in order for us to receive our long-term facility maintenance revenue from the state. In your packets tonight, we have a 10-year plan that outlines the various projects that we need to do over the upcoming years. Some of the projects I'd like to highlight are kind of a front and rear parking lot at the FCC building, replacement of lights for the stadium, which is going to be happening in this summer. We also have the parking lot project at Hayes that's currently ongoing. We're going to be doing some gym floor at the FCC, a rear gym at the middle school, classroom flooring at the high school, classroom flooring at the FCC. And then we're also working on, this happened just most recently, is we're having to do a major facility project, not a facility project, but a maintenance project at the middle school as relates to the pool. So those are kind of a variety of items that we have to do over the next few years. It is a 10-year plan. It does balance to the revenue that we're going to be receiving, which is $1,176 over the, over the 10 years. Again, that could be adjusted based on the long-term facility rate, maintenance revenue is based on student population, so that could change.
Is there someplace that the public can actually find that those individual specific projects and when, you know, when are we doing this specific or that specific project? Is that available on our website these, this point?
We don't post that detailed information on the website, but they would have access to the long, they would have access to the plan itself, but not the details.
Not the individual project.
Because those could change.
Right. We know that they can change, obviously.
It's kind of a fluid process, i.e. the middle school pool popped up on us unexpectedly.
Seems to be every year. Having a daughter in the swim and dive team, I recognize that happening every year it seems to be. But, all right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve and adopt the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Pruardo, seconded by Thornton, to adopt the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, can you call a roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. Next up, we also have a resolution with regards to Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916's long-term facility maintenance budget.
Yes, so the Northwest Metropolitan 916th, they have a consortium of districts. Fridley is one of the, we are Fridley as part of that 916th. The challenge that the 916th has is that they're not allowed to levy taxpayers for their revenue. So they're, they're required to put together a revenue plan and provide that to us in Fridley. And their plan this year is 144,700. They're required to do this annually. Now, our portion of that 144,700 is $3,463. What we do as a district then is we take that, that small dollar amount and levy that across the Fridley taxpayers, but it's a small dollar amount. So it's a very small impact to our Fridley community members. It is an impact, but it is small. Then what happens is we put that into our long-term facility maintenance plan, we receive that revenue is in our revenue and then we turn around and transfer that back to 916th so they can support their facility projects that they back to 916th so they can support their facility projects that they have ongoing in their district.
Questions on that? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of the proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for their long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Do I?
Breathe.
Do you need to catch your breath?
I got it. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton to approve the long-term facilities maintenance of Northeast Metro 916. Further discussion? If not, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Prito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Now we have a resolution authorizing the Intermediate School District 916 to apply for federal E-rate discounts and telecommunications/internet access equity aid on behalf of the district.
Yes, so starting on one, starting on one July, we here in Fridley, we're transferring our communication, our internet service provider from Ties or Sourcewell. And as part of that, they, Ties could apply for equity aid to help offset our internet cost. Now, starting on one July, we're going to be transferring to RVIG. So the 916th is working with their consortium of districts and putting forth a resolution that they have received approval from MDE to act on our behalf to apply for our equity aid. So they're more or less going to be our funding agent for our internet, and so we'll receive reimbursement or money for our internet cost.
So where it was Ties, it'll now be 916?
Correct.
Is the really only difference.
That's the only difference.
And by pooling, as part of that consortium, it allows us to get our internet service at a lesser price as part of that, the consortium going together.
I don't know if we necessarily get it at a lesser price, it's just they have allowed us, it's a very cumbersome process to apply for the equity aid, so the 916th is just doing it on our behalf, a plethora of districts in their consortium.
I'm sure that does.
I would have to get back to you on if it's a reduced cost.
It may not be reduced from Ties number, but. It probably isn't reduced.
As if we were, if we went out and did it ourselves. It's a significantly reduced price.
Yes, correct.
The consortium.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any additional questions on the internet access? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton to approve the resolution for authorizing intermediate district 916 to apply for the federal E-rate discounts and telecommunications/internet access equity aid on behalf of the district. Any no further questions? If not, clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Prito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. And since we're heavy on resolutions this evening, the next is a resolution regarding the board control of extracurricular activities.
Yes, so we have another change. So with Gatsby eighty-four and in, in direction from MDE, we are now required to move our student activities from under, not under board control, to board control. So what that means for us here in Fridley is we'll be transferring those from a non-district account under board control and our general fund. From a process standpoint, we don't have a lot of guidance yet from MDE on how that's going to impact the actual activities per se, but for us here in the business office, what we'll be doing is we'll be establishing budget codes that'll allow us to track our student activities since they are going to be part of our general fund. So that'll be easy for, I wouldn't say easy, but we'll be able to identify the, the specific student activities and as well as from an audit standpoint, so it's pretty seamless for us. And then as we receive more guidance from MDE, we'll be working with the student activities office and then the student activities across the district and helping them move forward in this new process.
Can you just clarify for me then, under the old process, those funds were not audited by anyone?
They had, they went under their own audit. They were audited, but it, but now they will be part of the overall, the district audit that we go through.
Okay.
And they will be auditing each group then, or will they, in the past, I know it like they would pick one topic group every year?
We don't have that guidance yet.
We don't, oh, that's part of the guidance we're still waiting on, okay?
Yes.
And now this is just for the extracurricular activities. This is not involving any of our booster groups. Those would be still totally separate.
They'll still be totally separate.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to, for the resolution to regard the board control of the extracurricular activities.
So moved.
Second.
I know.
It was yours, right? It was a motion by Delvo and seconded by Thornton to approve the resolution regarding board control of extracurricular activities. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Prito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And we next move up to our next resolution. And now we're getting into the, where we have talked a little bit earlier when Ms. McLemore talked about those resources and the community resources that are regularly funded, funding things for us in the district. We're very fortunate to have a, a community that does think so highly of us that they do give us donations every month. And in this past month, the following persons donated to the Hays Elementary for the total of one hundred and thirty-three dollars, be Catherine Johnson, Deanna Roth and the Schneider family. The following persons donating to middle school for a total of thirty dollars was Stephanie Sharp, Keisha. The donations to the Fridley High School for a total of one hundred and eighty dollars, Stephanie Sharp, Keisha and Allison Hoff. And then the following persons donated to the nutritional services department for a total of six thousand five hundred four dollars and forty-five cents are Passion Church, St. Phillips Lutheran Church, Jennifer Klassman and Linda Crone. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Prowedo, seconded by Stark to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Clerk, would you again please call the roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Prito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
All right, and then next item on our agenda this evening would be a motion for the second reading of several policies. Ms. Oftedal, you don't have to follow children for once.
It's very exciting for me. Board Chair Riddle, Board Member Superintendent Heil, I present to you policy six-one-six, District Systems Accountability for its second reading. There have been no significant changes since the last presentation. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve and accept the second reading and adoption of policy six-one-six?
Motion moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Adam, seconded by Prowedo to accept the second reading and adoption of policy six-one-six. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up is our consent agenda. This is the routine action items, including the minutes of the regular school board meeting and work session that were held May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations and retirements, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Q Comp report, and the agreement to provide special education and related services from nine sixteen. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we move on to written and I, written items beginning with student enrollment. Dr. Heil?
Thank you, Chair Riddle. Basically, it's over the last month since our last school board meeting. We've had several increases and decreases depending on what week you look at. So in general, we've had a slight decrease in our student enrollment at this time.
Thank you. Next up, we have a first reading of a policy seven ninety-nine nutritional services and meal chains. Mr. Tillong?
Yes, Board Chair Riddle, Board Members and Superintendent Heil. We are recommending that policy seven ninety-nine as relates to nutritional services meal charge be removed and we're going to be replacing it with a, a procedure. The process will still be the, we're just transitioning the, the verbiage and the guidance that's in the policy over to a procedure to make it more streamlined. And we did that based on, you know, policy from USDA. We had guidance from MSBA, MS, MASA, and then our Director of Nutritional Services also collaborated with the Minnesota School Nutrition Association. So it was more of a less a, a transition for us, just to make it better for us in the district. Since this is going to be a procedural change, what we're going to be doing is we'll be putting the, a small verbiage in the student handbook so they'll understand that process change from a student perspective and a parent perspective. We'll also be posting the, the procedure on the school website. And then finally, here at the end of the month, we'll be mailing out the actual procedure itself with the educational benefits application to all of the parents across Fridley School District, so they'll have that as well.
From our student experience, they're not going to know anything happened?
No, ma'am.
I mean, it's not changing their experience.
No, it's not changing their experience.
It's more of a management governance process issue.
Correct, yes.
But it's not going to change the process on the ground for our families.
It will not, no, it will not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up, we move on to reports from school board members beginning with schools in, for equity in education, the meeting held May twenty-third.
Thank you. I was able to attend that meeting and that meeting, they provided a legislative update to start out with, but I will share that part when I do the AMSD update because they shared the same information. There was an excellent presentation from Education Minnesota from Dr. Tom, excuse me, from Dr. Justin Killian and Paul Winkler, and the information that they wanted to share was from the Epic Research Report that Education Minnesota had worked on. One of the first things they wanted to share was just information about how schools can become full-service community schools. And these are schools that offer multiple services to families and to students such as having a dentist or a doctor on site in which students can go to and it just helps to eliminate absences. So there's a nice report that they put out on that. Another excellent part of the report that they shared was on interrupting racism, strengthening communities and accelerating student learning. And this was around building equitable school system for all students and staff. The, the basics of this report was the need to have restorative and trauma-informed practices in schools in Minnesota. They also addressed the need for how funding issues in our state of Minnesota perpetuate the racial achievement gap and also actually contributes and make an impact on teacher attrition. And also kind of preaching to the choir for us to understand that schools need to have fair and equitable funding regardless of where our students attend school. But they took some time to kind of share some of the equity issues that we have in the state of Minnesota. We are at a critical point in Minnesota around the areas of equity and how it's impacting. We have more serious issues in other states in the United States, so currently just some of the facts that shares the gap between white and black students in Minnesota academically is more than twenty points and as well as we all know, there's a discipline gap as well with that. And one of the things I just wanted to share that they reflected on that gave me kind of an aha moment was a quote that said, if a student does not know how to read, we teach them how to read. But if a student does not know how to behave, we punish the child. This is a root of the problem. Educators need the agency to tackle the behavioral limitations of students in the same way that we confront academic limitations of students. So that we must allow educators to teach students life skills both academically and behaviorally. So they had shown through this study excellent results in using trauma-informed practices and restorative practices. And one way in which trauma-informed practices is, are looked at is through evaluating adverse childhood experiences. So one of the things they shared for the state of Minnesota, that fifty-five percent of Minnesotans have on the ACE score at least one or higher. Of those who have one or more adverse childhood experiences, sixty percent have two, and fifty, fifty percent of those have had five or more. So they gave us in the report, the average, if you took an average Minnesota class size of thirty students, that sixteen and seventeen of those students would have an ACE score of one or higher, and at least two or three of those students would have an ACE score of five or higher. So they're really recommending through this epic report to work on trauma-informed practices and restorative practices. And one of the ways is because it builds a healthy relationship between the staff and the students, also helps to reduce and prevent harmful behavior that occurs. But the wonderful thing about restorative practices is as well, it gives the child who has been harmed a voice. So it helps to restore that relationship and build those positive relationships back. So it was interesting and I'd love to report and they were able to send out free books if you called to ask, but of the two practices, trauma-informed practices as well as restorative practices as well as PBAS, all of these initiatives are listed in our operational plan and we'll be working to ensure our staff get support and training in those areas. So our next, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to go.
You got to keep going, right? You got AMSD would be the next meeting.
Okay.
So let's tell us what happened at the AMSD.
Thank you. AMSD was the next day after CE, so they both shared the twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen legislative session updates because they had just signed it earlier in the week. So you had Dr. Tom Melcher, who's the Director of School Finance for MDE, presented. And it's basically something, things that we have discussed already. So we had the, the increase in the general fund that occurred over the two years. We're very thrilled that the VPK was approved for an additional two years as well as they were able to address the special ed cross subsidy through increasing special ed aid just to leave that constant. So that helps in fight inflation as well, so. And those are those two reports.
All right, thank you. Next up would be the Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting held June fifth.
Yes, quick report. We are celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of nine sixteen Intermediate School District. So they've got a video map kind of showing where they've been and how they've grown over the, over the years. Senator Tina Smith visited Carner Blue, which is one of the schools in the nine sixteen district, to talk about the work that is being done around mental health issues and then interacting with many of the students who were there as well. They are launching, nine sixteen is launching a new website the end of June and it is going